Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman and as President of the San Angelo ISD School District Board of Trustees, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, you may be aware, our board meeting's a minimum of two times per month, and most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and then voted upon at our regular board meeting. As members of SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item on our agenda that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item that is not on our agenda or an item on our agenda, an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located at the back of the room. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so that we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. You will be notified when your time is up. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance being processed by the district, you will not be permitted to speak about the grievance during public comment. Also, please understand, if you offer public comment, that the board cannot reply except to thank you for the comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. I ask you, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I ask you, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cellphones. Again, thank you for being here and your support of SAISD. We do have a quorum this evening. Mrs. Arroyo and Mr. Dindel are unable to attend tonight, so we will move forward with our pledges. Please stand and face the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and
Thank you all. Next on our agenda is public comments. No one has signed up this evening, so we'll keep moving forward with the business of our meeting. Next item on our agenda is to conduct our finance and audit committee workshop. Mr. Dindel is not here this evening, so I'm going to do that, and we're going to turn that over to Tiffany Hebert for management oversight presentation on the child nutrition.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Kingman. I can project pretty well, so I was going to be okay. Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, ladies and gentlemen of the board and the cabinet team. On behalf of the Child Nutrition Services Department, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share with you this evening a snapshot of our past year and a glimpse of our current one. And before I get started, I just wanted to take a moment to introduce Mr. Benjamin Rolfo Settle. He's our new Assistant Director for the Child Nutrition Department. So periodically throughout the year, you may be seeing him from time to time as he presents different things. We would like to start by sharing our mission as a department. We just recently redid this mission so it would become more in line with the district mission. So the mission of the San Angelo ISD Child Nutrition Services is to support students and their education by providing quality nutrition to fuel future-ready graduates. So here's a look at our work towards fulfilling this mission. On the screen, you can see a four-year snapshot of comparing total meals served throughout the last four years. And this four-year snapshot actually starts at a rough period, which was the beginning of the pandemic. So you can see that the meals were lowest during that time period. With the quarantine requirements that came with that time and blended learning, our program was beginning to operate waivers for free breakfast and lunch for all students that were in place, but we didn't truly see those benefits until the following year. So in 2021, 2022, we continued to offer free meals under continued pandemic waivers, enabling us to provide over 1 million breakfasts and over 1 million lunches that year. So that was a very positive year for our students and families. In 2022, 2023, we do see a decline as a result of those waivers ending and our program returning to the National School Lunch Program, which is the standard program that most child nutrition programs operate under, which require applications to determine free and reduced meal eligibility. But in 2324, you can kind of see it's starting to inch up a little bit, and so our district did continue the National School Lunch Program. However, you can see we are beginning to participate, receive an increase in participation even though we had a loss at breakfast. We did still have an overall increase in meals served of 12,277 over the previous year. So that was a positive thing that we got to see when preparing this. One of the things that helps us as we're working through different challenges is when we receive grants from the USDA and TDA. So you can see on the screen, two grants that we wanted to highlight to make sure that you know that we've been receiving. So in 2324, our department was awarded $687,215 in supply chain grant awards. So since 2022, our district has been awarded $1.5 million from the USDA in supply chain grants, and those grants were designed to help us purchase minimally-processed foods such as fresh or frozen produce, milk, and 100% juice. Those are very strict, they have very strict boxes for us to stay in. So when we were looking at it because of our high-volume usage in 100% juice and milk, that is what we have been utilizing the funds from this grant for. So we will get to continue doing that throughout this school year because there's no deadline for use for that, those grant funds for that one. So we still have $500,000 of that grant that we're using in this current school year for those items. And then last year in 2324, we also received a local foods for schools grant in the amount of $85,000, and this is a unique grant. This grant is awarded and used for the purchase of minimally-processed, locally-grown, raised bread, and harvested-in-Texas products. So we've been using this grant to actually purchase Texas bread and raised beef, ground beef, so, which we've been getting a really good price on in comparison to non-Texas beef, which is an amazing thing as well. And we've been using that in our scratch nacho meat, which is a kid's favorite, of course, and then also our from-scratch spaghetti sauce, as well as our newest recipe, our home-style meatloaf, which we debuted last year. And so we do still have a balance of $60,000 on this grant that we have to use by March of 2025. And this is just a little preview of some of the trays that our staff created last year. So you can kind of see some of the bright colors that they, that they did with, the top corner is a representation of fresh food, fresh fruits that we got from the Department of Defense Fresh Fruits and Vegetables Program. In the center, we have National School Lunch Week and National School Breakfast Week. So last year during National School Breakfast Week, we trialed a bagel at secondaries with fresh fruit and cream cheese, and it was so successful, it's actually on the cycle menu this year. So we're excited about that. We did breakfast for lunch last year, which is the tray at the very top, I guess you're right. And the very bottom, you can't see it very well, but that is the meatloaf that we've been purchasing the, with the beef, with the grant money for. And then in the center on the bottom is our Cinco de Mayo tray, which was two cheese enchiladas with a homemade red enchilada sauce, which is delicious. And then we also offered on that same day a choice of that or chicken fajitas, which were very, very good. And those were, that was USDA chicken that came in, but it was very, very good quality. And then some of our fresh vegetables that we also offer as well. And of course, as small as this is, we have a wonderful staff, and they are the heart and soul of being able to serve our students, so none of this happens without them. And so we could not serve our students without the incredible child nutrition professionals who are fully dedicated to taking care of students at their campus. And these images are images from us going out and seeing them and appreciating them in last May for Child Nutrition School Hero Day. And so we like to tell them they're the best nutrition staff in the West, and they got little T-shirts that had like a sheriff's badge on it and that said, "Best Nutrition Staff in the West" on that. So we're very grateful for them. Looking at what's been going on for this school year, summers are very busy for our team as well, and this summer was not only full of our regular to-dos, but also for preparing for the next school year. We had many projects that made a huge impact on the current school year that we just moved into. So the first thing we'd like to talk about is the, what happened to all of the equipment from the kitchens at the, from the mergers, from Central Oaks, Altaloma, and Austin. So we were able to repurpose that equipment. Our warehouse staff spent June, which is a very hot month, going out to these kitchens and retrieving all of that usable equipment, and they were able to take that either to campuses that needed additional equipment, they needed equipment replaced with better equipment, or it was brought back to our warehouse to be able to use for future, for future purposes for those same reasons. Additionally, with the merger, we had to find a solution for Central High School because we were moving the freshmen over to Central High School. So we kind of looked at some different options, but with the help of special education, the administration team, maintenance, and our warehouse team, we were able to provide upgrades to the Sippum Cats trailer in partnership with the special education to be able to provide breakfast every day from that trailer and also à la carte lunch options from that trailer, and it provided two additional serving lines to that campus. So now they have a total of six serving lines at that campus, and it has gone very successfully. Everybody's getting fed within the timeframe, so that's, that's wonderful. And each year, we do professional development with our staff. This year, we kind of did an overhaul of our professional development. We kind of took a step back and looked at what we could improve in that area. We always start about two weeks out from the beginning of school, and it was no different this year. On July 31st, we brought back our management team for our cafeterias, and we started with the manager training. And then we followed that with cashier's trainings, new higher department orientations, our serve-safe and food handler certification courses took place in that two weeks, and also our full department staff came together and did a full department training as well. And each of these trainings was taught by our office staff, who customized content and trainings to be relevant for the upcoming school year. And all of our trainings are geared towards supporting staff so they can support our students in the best way possible. And then, as, as you know, this year, we also received approval from TDA for seven of our campuses to operate under the Community Eligibility Provision, or CEP as it's most commonly called, instead of the National School Lunch Program. So under this provision, these seven campuses, which are Bradford, Fannin, Goliad, Reagan, San Jacinto, Lincoln, and Lakeview, all receive free breakfast and lunch daily as a result of their high identified student percentage, which is also called the ISP, or percentage of students who are directly certified for free and reduced meal benefits. So this provision has provided opportunity for 3,728 students to receive meals regardless of their household eligibility. That's had a very positive impact on participation as well, so we know that that was a needed, that was a needed program for those campuses. And we're looking forward to working to expand that to more campuses in the future as well. These are just a few images that we wanted to show you of the Sippum Cats upgrades. Got a lot of Central Pride in there, but we had to redo the inside of the trailer in order to install new equipment so that we could get a food service permit, and we also had to pass health and fire inspections in order to be operational in the fall, and we were able to do all of that. So we're very excited. And the two individuals in the center of the screen are, are workers that work in there every day, and they, they were so flexible, and they have, they have really taken a halt of that and made that trailer, I mean, they really love serving the students from that trailer, so they've done a wonderful job. So we wanted y'all to be able to see that solution that was provided to that campus. So of course, we do have challenges. Not everything is sunshines and rainbows, as y'all all know, but while this is not an all-inclusive list of the challenges we're sure to face in this upcoming school year, these are ones that we are currently working to stay ahead of. So of course, supply chain issues and costs are not rising at the sharp spike that they did immediately after the pandemic, but they're still rising, as anybody who grocery shops knows. They're definitely not coming down, but the different supply chain grants and stuff that USDA and TDA are providing have helped us stay ahead of that challenge. And so we also have faced similar challenges and labor shortages. However, again, while those haven't completely eased, we are starting to see applicants rolling back into the system at a more frequent basis, so we're actually closest to being fully staffed that we have been since the pandemic. And, and it's like, I don't want to jinx it, but we're very, very close. So we're very excited about that. And then equipment repairs. Aging equipment can be costly to maintain, as everybody knows. In today's economy, it can also be very expensive to replace. So we are working on a new strategy to track and address aging equipment that can efficiently repair or replace the equipment in the coming years, especially our freezers and walk-in units in the hot summer months. We see a lot of great challenges with that. However, last year, we did implement a temperature monitoring system that allows us to monitor the temperature remotely, and that has saved us thousands of dollars in product loss because we're able to see when a freezer is rising. We have thresholds where we get to go out there before it reaches a concern point. So we can pull that product out, move it to our warehouse, get the equipment repaired, move the product over back to the campus without losing any product. So that has been a great solution for that as well. And then of course, as you can see at the bottom, not what anybody ever wants to hear in our program, but nutrition standards are getting stricter, starting at the beginning of next year. The USDA has yet again tightened some regulations on sugar and sodium, but they are giving us enough time to be able to look forward towards those things and be able to implement those changes. So starting next year, we'll have some stricter sugar restrictions, and then by 2027, the sodium restrictions get a little bit tighter, but our vendors and suppliers are also in on those meetings, so they're working with us to try and solve those issues as well. And then these are just, we have a lot of department goals, but I know we're limited on time. So these are the top three goals that we have right now as a priority. So our top priority, one of our top priorities is to expand CEP to additional campuses, of course, for the next school year, as their ISPs and financial viability on the provision become an option for being coming approved. The CEP review starts in March of every year, so this March, we'll be evaluating additional campuses to see if we can expand that program. And then of course, increasing innovation in both our meals and service options is the top priority. We have been following many other child nutrition programs across the nation, and there's some very inspirational programs out there that show us what we can do in our district as well and bring to our students. So we're working to see how we can do that and maybe bring some new innovative ideas, service options, and even recipes to our students. But we would also like to work on expanding nutrition education in our district and work with programs such as our culinary department in order to expand their ideas into our program as well. And then as mentioned earlier, we're working on a system to address aging equipment and issue, track issues and different things like that that we have with equipment. And most importantly, we want to hear what the students like and want. That's our number one goal, is to work with our students, to get out there in the cafeterias, to do taste testings, to hear what they like, to hear what they want, and that's how we know what we need to do with our menus for the next school year and even sometimes during this school year. If we run, if they absolutely don't like a product, once it's out, we don't have to bring it back. So, you know, hearing their voices is what matters, so that's one of our top priorities for this school year. So thank you for your time and listening to what our program is doing right now on behalf of our students and, and the district. So, you have any questions?
Any questions on the board?
I was going to ask you, you said, did you have losses in breakfast?
Yes, so one of the things that we began trying about two years ago was, we had one campus in particular that wanted to try and pull out of the breakfast in the classroom program to bring them back through the line so that we can have expanded options. There's limited options with what you could do serving in the classroom. But of course, we saw a decline from that, and the next year, we, we weren't sure if it would offset with the cost that you would save in waste from the breakfast in the classroom program. So two campuses moved to doing breakfast through the line instead of breakfast in the classroom, and we saw a decline in participation at those campuses. So we're working on strategies to increase those campus participations.
All right, thank you.
Yes, you're very welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you. I know you've stepped into this role this year. We're happy to have you in this role, and thank you for your help.
Thank you very much.
I have one question. The community incentive or the eligibility?
Eligibility, yes.
Is that a one, two, three-year when the campus qualifies for that? Or is that?
It's a four-year, actually.
Four-year.
Yes, so once a campus has been approved on that provision, it, they don't have to recertify for four years. So the campuses that are certified on that provision right now are, are good for that for four years.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Do they have to be the, I guess, well, because we have a lot of campuses that are eligible for the free and reduced lunch, right? So is that one of the requirements for them?
So it's a little bit different than the free and reduced eligibilities. We have students who qualify for free and reduced meals through what's called the direct certification process, which we get state lists of students who are directly certified for the free and reduced meals, and then we also have students who are homeless, foster, migrant, different programs like that that directly certify students, and that's what the identified student percentage is based off of. So when a campus has a high ISP or identified student percentage, that's what helps them qualify for these, for these, for this program. And so, and campuses that may qualify at a lower percentage, we have to be able to offset the difference. And so we, we, the district, it's up to the districts to be able to balance out and make sure that it's financially viable whenever you're adding a campus.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move forward, and next up is Mr. Henry with a construction update.
I want to thank y'all for having me here tonight. We'll go ahead and jump right into this. The first campus we're going to talk about is McGill Elementary School. Here are a couple pictures of the, the one on the left is the front entry. We do have, we did, we were able to get the entire campus all enclosed and dried in. They're currently running the HVAC system throughout the building. Not all of them are running all day long. They just run a few just to temper the room so that we can start putting in flooring and items like that that need to be tempered. They do, they are at the point where they can lock up the entire facility at this point. On the right side, this is the big grand hallway that runs from north to south on the campus. It runs right into the old campus' front door, pretty much. This is the kitchen and cafe. Right now, they're taping off all the stuff in the ceiling so that they can start painting the ceiling and finishing that up. Tile work continues throughout the campus. Merle and I discussed this earlier, and today, one of the things that I really like is some of the hard finishes that Park Hill helped us pick out as far as tile on some of the walls and stuff that lasts for years to go into the future. Here's one of the classrooms. Most, I think every classroom except for three are ready to go. They have carpet in them, all the cabinetry painted. All they have to do is have the ceilings dropped in. We're waiting to have our final double-check overhead inspection with Park Hill. Their engineers will come through and stick their heads in every crevice of the overhead before we seal it all up. The next project we have is Fannin. Current, currently, here's where we are on the outside. We have a little bit of dirt work that we're still working on. The rain last week, while it did put us behind, it did give us a great opportunity to make sure that all of our drainage is working properly. I will say that the engineering on the drainage, we'll have to give Russell Goli a high five. He did really good on making sure that that all works. The picture there on the left, they have all the stones in place. The next phase on this one is going to be the play court. They have to pour a small switchback ramp to get handicap access to it, and then they'll be pouring the playground or play court. There on the right, that's the retention pond that was built in the middle, and it did actually hold some water last week while we had our big rains. A few of the other things that they're working on is the fencing. Right now, they're working in the very back by the alley to close all that up, and then they're working their way around to the front. Once they finish that, they'll put fencing across here, across the blocks there. There'll be a 10-foot fence to keep all the balls out of the parking lot. They're also working on landscaping and really feathering out all that debris and stuff in the front. Harrison roofing's on the gutters. They're just waiting for a little bit more of their material to come in so that they can finish that all up. On the interior, right now, they're working on a punch list. It was a pretty extensive punch list, about 36 pages long. Not all of them are big items. Some of them are just, take the sticker off of this window or straighten up this plug to make sure that it's perfectly straight, but they're working away on that. They're working on that on nights and weekends to stay out of the way of the teachers and students. The right-hand side there, you'll see those white panels, they called those clouds. In my head, when they kept on talking about clouds, I was picturing something pillowy and soft, and these are square and hard-cornered, but what they are is they're sound panels. They're working on hanging those up. Those were a long lead-time item that we had not received, and then they're also waiting to receive the cabinetry, which will be here on Wednesday and Thursday, and then they're going to install that in the evenings and on weekends. Did y'all have any questions over either one of those projects?
How did all our, how did all our work do in the rain? Six inches of rain, everything was dry?
We had, to my knowledge, we had no leaks. I went over there several times, and nobody said anything about any leaks, no wet tiles, nothing like that. We did, Harrison did a good job on the roof.
And then on the, the retention pond at Fannin, is that, that's required by the city, isn't it?
Correct. That's part of the stormwater runoff.
Yeah, stormwater runoff.
I wish Tim Archer was here to...
Oh yeah, he said, he still loves that. He'd spend 15 minutes on it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jason. Any other questions for Mr. Henry? All right, so we'll move into our finance and routine reports. So you'll notice that later in our agenda, we have some things we have to approve for from July, but because it's the last month of the budget, we won't have things until the end of, until October for our September budgets. We do have our PO, and that starts on page seven. Only thing I'll draw attention to in all of that is, to my count, it's roughly $300,000 that we spent on security film for campuses. So that's the film that protect, if a, it protects, it makes the glasses less shatter, shatter resistant. So that was the only thing that I saw. Any questions?
Just, just one about the, we had the software license for both the, like, the class tag and the school status. Is that, it was the same amount. I saw 44,525. It was twice, one on the 26th and one on the 21st.
That was a misprint. What happened was they renewed it, and the company has changed names, so then they canceled that first one and printed out a new one on the, for the current name.
Okay, that's, thank you.
All right, any other questions on our POs? All right, no, then we're going to move forward through our proposed agenda for our September 16th meeting. So we have our pledges, our invocation pledges, recognitions, minutes, public comments, information items. We're going to have the efficiency audit, which is part of the Proposition A, that will, we will have those results for next week. We don't have anything this evening, though, correct? They'll be here next week. Okay.
And Representative from ID Bailey will be here to present that information.
Okay.
We will. Dr. Kingman will send that out Friday, so everybody has a chance to see it ahead of time.
Okay. How about our Facility Advisory Committee planning? Do we need anything on that this evening?
No, sir.
Okay.
And that, that, again, that'll be an overview of the committee planning process timeline. And this, this, for the board's sake, this is an advisory committee that's being stood up to review Park Hill's facility evaluation. that's being stood up to review Park Hill's facility evaluation and digest that information and then bring to the board at the end of the fall, some recommendations on what they feel would be a good direction or, or some projects that would be worth tackling as a district. And then, of course, the board has the final authority. So this is truly an advisory committee, which rolls into the next item, which is the charter. And those are simply the ground, ground rules for the committee that outline the purpose of the committee and their, their authority and the restrictions of that particular committee so that they are not a final decision-making body.
So let's make all of that for, as reports for our regular board meeting. And then update on San Jacinto. Dr. Brandon, you have anything this evening? Do you wanna, I know that, Dr. Moran?
I don't have a report this evening. So we're waiting on a confirmation from city or from fire department to be here for that update, just to give us a glimpse of kind of what that process looks like.
And I think it's fair to mention to the board that the city has, has been inside the building to evaluate. And they did not red-tag the building, but they did close the building. I think Tony Kennedy is the only one with authority to enter. But at this point in the game, we're waiting on their final evaluation, if you will, and recommendations and next steps. And so we'll anticipate, as soon as we get something from the city, we'll share it with the board. But that'll be a discussion for next Monday night.
So, so the fire department and the city both have inspected it?
Right. And I'm gonna defer to Dr. Brandon on that one, as far as who actually looked at the building.
Yeah. And one of the assistant fire chiefs went with Mr. Kennedy. And then after going through the building, issued the placards, unsafe, unsafe building placards for every door. And then that information then moves to individuals of the city.
City engineers.
As they assess the length of time that the school district has for either repair or closure. So, but our goal is to have them kind of go over with us, what is that review process? So that's our hope on Monday night, is for them to share that with the board.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the facility evaluation update, we will also hopefully be getting in Friday fax. And then they will present to us next week as well.
Right. And this is Park Hill's evaluation of our facilities. And I have to warn you upfront, it's, it's very thorough and comprehensive. The central evaluation was 400 and something pages. And that was just for that campus. But what we plan to do is, we're meeting with Park Hill tomorrow. And they're going to go over not every detail, obviously. That would take a long time. And what they hope to bring you next week is a very comprehensive overview with, you know, recommendations, timelines, thoughts, just to generate discussion with the board and allow for an open Q and A really on what their take on our facilities have been. So this should be a, a pretty thorough and lengthy presentation. And that's why they fall that far down on the information items. Several of these, I'm sure Ida Bailey would not like to sit through that presentation to present there. So we tried to structure it so that Park Hill wouldn't feel rushed. So be prepared to, for a very lengthy and thorough, comprehensive presentation.
Perfect. All right. And then Dr. Gomez for update on academic performance next week. You'll have something?
And again, our goal on that is really to give the board a look back where we are and a look ahead so that you all, as a board, can know, we want to be thorough in giving you the information that you need to help us and support us as we make decisions instructionally.
All right. So we'll get all those reports. And so everyone come with a full stomach next week, and a couple balls of water. All right. So next, we're gonna... Okay, sorry. So then on page 34 is the bills accounts and financial statements from July, which we did not have for our early board meeting in August. So we discussed, we presented them at our last board meeting in August, but now they'll need to be actually voted on at the regular board meeting next week. And just as a reminder, so on page 36, it just showed that our estimated unassigned fund balance was stable of $51 million and that we were at 89% of our total expenditures after 11 months, which would be 92%. So we're on budget for the, for that month with those. And then we discussed those before. So that will need to stay regular. We do have a class size waiver. We can do that next week as part of our regular board meeting. So that will be a presentation regular, or we're not gonna do the presentation tonight. And then Superintendent Goals, I'm gonna defer to you, Dr. Moran, talking to us about that for a moment.
Sure. Well, it's important for the, the board as a whole and my office to have common goals that support the work of the district. And part of our Team of Eight training this summer was to establish and develop common goals. And so we've worked through that. You've got a hard copy on your desk. I emailed a copy to you as well. But these are draft goals. If we need to make adjustments, we certainly can do that. But these are pointed towards what we believe to be the important and necessary work of the district. And so as you read through those over the course of the week, if you have questions, feel free to call my office or email. But the goal here is to establish these and then communicate those to our, our district, our employees, departments, and make sure everybody knows this is the work. And this is the work that you all, as a board, can hold me accountable to. And this is the work I'll hold our staff accountable to. So we feel like, you know, if we accomplish these goals, we're really, really headed in the right direction. And we'll be publicizing those, obviously. And once the board adopts those, they'll be on the website. And the public will, will be able to see exactly what goals we've set that are SMART goals, are specific, measurable, attainable, results-oriented, and time-bound.
So as y'all recall from our Team of Eight, we discussed having goals that were measurable. And so as y'all are looking through this, we need to just make sure that not only are they measurable, but that the board is comfortable with the fact that they accomplish the spirit of what we discussed in our Team of Eight training, to make sure they are in line with what the board was hoping that, because our goal is to be able to hold Dr. Moran accountable for anything that goes along this. That's our, that's our lever. And so we want to make sure that we've chosen the, the right goals with that. So everyone look over those this next week. And we will go, we will either approve or make modifications as necessary. I'll reach out to myself or Dr. Moran on those over this next week. So let's keep that regular as well. And then, other than that, we have announcements, which we have a regular board meeting on September 16th. The TASD, TASB, September 26th to 29th. Then October 15th, we're gonna have a pre-agenda workshop. And on October 21st, we're gonna have a regular board meeting. Now, before we adjourn, we do need to go into executive session under Personnel, which is 551.074. So we're gonna do that, and we'll be right back. All right. It is 6:45. We took no actions. We're back from executive session. We took no action and we took no votes. And we are adjourned.